Okay, everybody ready to hear this? 9:00 AM on Monday. September 23rd, 2019, Potter County, County Choice. Today we have Anthony and Harris from State Department of Defense who will be our indications. So if you will keep standing, ladies and gentlemen, for the pleasure.
Let us pray. Eternal and heavenly Father, He who is the Creator of all things seen and unseen, From the majestic snow-capped mountains, To the rivers, the valleys, and the streams. Lord, we come before You to say thank You for this day. Lord, as this court has gathered to do the business of Your people. Lord, we pray that You give them wisdom and insight as they go through the various propositions, dealings of our county. We pray, oh Lord, that You would allow them to do so, realizing and recognizing that they have the care of others in their hand. So, Lord, we pray for them, we pray for our sheriffs, we pray for all of our county officials. Lord, we pray that You just continue to give them a heart of service. A heart of service that will serve your people in such a way that will bring joy and glory to you. We thank you for them, we thank you for their commitment, we thank you for their service. In Your Son Jesus' name, amen.
We're the communities to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our honor, Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state, under God, one indivisible.
Okay, first thing on the agenda this morning is for four minutes, September 9th. 49, Potter County, District 4, and Special Commissioner's Court, September 6th, 2019.
I don't want any, I would suggest it changes other than follow-up. Stephanie, you had questioned the actual range and all that, but it was correct.
Okay, it was correct.
I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
All right, we've got some of the two vouchers. To consider and act upon the approval of the payment of vouchers, process of the county sheriff's office from here in September 4th, September 18th, 2019. Check numbers 1-87448 through 1-87662. And wire transfers 1-2-A and 0-3-1-2 in the amount of $2,966,040.15.
Will we approve the voucher check?
Second, for quick discussion. Page 1 of 27, I almost said Carrie, then I looked right up, so good morning. Check number 1-87453. Looks like there's a line item for travel expenses, sheriff's office. I'm assuming that's more than one person, I just wanted to confirm that. And the way that it's written, it's the MasterCard, so normally we have a little detail there. I'll see that on this particular one.
Yeah, I'm assuming it is true, that because that's-
The sheriff is right there on show, you can tell me if it's yes or no.
It's more than one.
More than one, okay, perfect. And then my second question, and this may be one for Kay. There's check, or page, I'm sorry, page 17 of 27. Check number 1-87647, TAC plus 22,000. And I guess maybe just to call out an agenda item, maybe in the future you give an update on the rollout of the TAC clause.
It's, we're not quite ready to roll that out, and we wanted to get it purchased in this budget year.
Okay.
We have to wait until we get open enrollment behind us and get everything prepared before we can start anything else, but we will be rolling out the upgrade as soon as possible.
Okay, because I know there were some large departments that were still left, and I think we're probably five years in of that implementation.
No, the largest one is the sheriff's office. And we're looking at bringing them on incrementally and to see how it works.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Number three, Treasurers Report, do you hear the monthly Treasurers Report?
Good morning, I'd like to prepare me first.
I know what usually is, I don't know about them.
Okay, at this morning, A, we have $9,962,670.30 earning 2.19%. Texas Class, we have $6,906,516.670.30 earning 2.18%. Texas Pool Prime, $12,703,610.73 earning 2.17%. And Texas Pool, we have $417,493.73 earning 2.03%. So our total cash this morning is $29,991,291.63. And I look back, this Commissioner's Court last year, our total at that time was $25,591,421.11. And I thought I'd give you our rates, we have gone down some. It's not time to panic yet, or what, I mean, our market's still been a fluctuation rate for a little while, but we're stable. In 2018, A and B was earning 2.27, we're now at 2.19. Texas Pool was earning 1.98, and we're now earning 2.03. Prime, Texas Pool Prime was 2.20 in 2018, and this year we're earning 2, this time 2.17. And Texas Class, we were earning 2.26, and this time, this time of year, 2.18.
So, okay. Leanne, one question, as we get ready for our new fiscal year, I know usually it's a good time to pause and look at the investment strategy and the pools. Are you anticipating any changes coming into this year, are you just going to be thinking about?
Yes, in fact, Brooke and I met with a new broker Friday, and we, I really want to go into broker CVs. And so, this is end of quarter as well as fiscal year, so I'll be leading with my investment committee. And so I do have some plans lined up, I'm excited to move forward, so yeah, we'll be making some changes.
Thank you, thank you.
Before insurance report came, sorry, I shouldn't have had you do that all over. It's okay, there's, there's one thing that I did want to make note of on the insurance report. If you'll see down under, September 5th, 19, TAC Weekly Claims includes overgrat. What happened with that, we had a weekly claims funding that came through at 67,161.80, and they TAC inadvertently withdrew or drafted 93,587.85. Down on September 10th, 19, you'll see TAC overgrat correction of that $26,426.05. So they immediately made the correction.
Okay, the only question I had is the high claim that you mentioned several court sessions ago, and then last session you gave an update, said that should be one occurrence, is that still the current thing?
Yes, and it, yeah, it is on the claims funding request dated September 3rd for $130,005.97.45.
That's where the high claim is.
That's where the high claim is.
Okay, and still that is consistent, that was just one occurrence, we're not just-
As far as we know, it's just one occurrence, and they believe that it will be stable maybe forward unless there's something unforeseen that happens.
And then maybe just a quick follow-up as we transition to the new Ednum provider and the city relationship outside of, I mean, the logistics of what everybody's working through. Have you heard anything during open enrollment, or do you think you want to share with us?
We are having some issues this morning. Insurance cards went out over the link-in, and we've received several calls starting early this morning. Some folks are showing dependents that aren't covered, and we believe that Ed may have utilized the first list that was pulled down from TAC, which had several folks that weren't covered on the plan. What the hell, which of its plan? Because if you recall, TAC in the past has also had dental, life, and all of those components. And so the first list that pulled down had a number of folks on it with health insurance that weren't covered on the health insurance. They were, were wondering if maybe they had inadvertently used the wrong list to send out the first run of cards, we're in process now to try and work through that, and have just started receiving calls this morning. So we'll put something out to employees as soon as we're made aware of what the issue is.
And to at least check that card, because luckily, those that just happen to check it, some people may not even check it, just put it in their wallet, okay? Okay.
There's kind of been, I got mine on Friday.
Okay.
And then I think we had a number of folks that got the card. Like I say, we're, we're getting to calls, whether there's some kind of issue going on, and we're working on it.
Do you don't have to handle it yet?
No, basically not.
Simply a card, that's all?
They did. Okay, I'll put you off the list.
Okay, thank you for that, Kay, stay right where you are. And we found County Choice Silver to hear a report, County Choice Silver, and take any action now, soon.
This is just our annual renewal for County Choice Silver. This is our supplement, Medicare supplement that we offer retirees. We have to renew every year, this is the same choices that we had last year. We currently have three individuals that have opted under Potter County to the lag County Choice Silver, the last one signed up in 2014. So it's not a real high usage plan, but it's something we do offer retirees. If you look on the last page of your handout, there's kind of a sun ring of the options. We currently utilize Plan App, so our current plan is that top plan. You'll see the plan pays 100% of Medicare eligible expenses, including Part A and Part B deductibles. We chose to stay with that plan last year, that would be my recommendation again this year. And part of the reason for that is because if you look further down on those options, Plan D pays 100% of Medicare eligible expenses, including Part A deductible and 50% of Part B. So the benefits are somewhat reduced on that plan. And F is what we have been with for a number of years, and my recommendation would be to stay.
Kay, do you ever have any, any retirees call and talk about this? Do you ever need to call and ask?
No, once, once we refer them to County Choice Silver, they deal directly with County Choice Silver.
And this is just voluntary, and it's a nice thing to offer.
And it's a no cost, and it's no cost.
I'm just, yeah. Continue with Plan F. Of the County Silver, County Choice.
Second, if you have a motion, and second, if you have a favoration, then. Um, thank you, thanks, Kay. Number six, Potter County State Department of Justice to hear a update from those who requested.
Good morning, and I will, just in terms of setting the stage a little, because we did just have an update from another agent, but we are now fully staffed, which we haven't been in a couple of years out there. So there's an agenda item, where we ultimately see one right after the other. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning, thank you Judge Commissioner Earline, that's going to be here. We appreciate the opportunity to inform everyone about Agrileight and the programs that we provide. So we're excited, I'm excited this morning, because the fair is over. And we're here to, we had a fun time, and I'm here to just let you know some of the educational programs that we were in charge of and that we provided to Potter families. In Agrileight Family and Community Health, which is the area that I oversee, that included implementing a senior day health fair at the Emerald National Bank Center. We had 55 vendors, they set up and they provided resources and educational health and wellness information. We were excited to see over 503 seniors come out, and they received a full wellness check. They received their blood glucose, their eye exams, weight management, we also had flu shots available. And then we recognized two of our participants, who were the oldest participants, we do this every year, and so the male was 93, and the female was 101. It was a great day out there.
They know all the lyrics.
A lot of fun.
Sorry about you.
I'll never get to that.
You don't want to be guessing that. Sometimes it's the same people that, because we're excited, so hopefully they show up 94 and 101. We're also, I also coordinated what's called the Pride of the Panhandle, and we have this every year. This is where the county agents from District 1 come together. We provide a nutrition education booth and samples to our families. And so we promote local produce and local commodities. And so I brought a book for you, if you missed the fair, I'm going to give you what we hand out. People enjoy this because it's the recipes that we provide. And maybe I'll make it out to our food. So these are the recipes and the calendars, the little booklet is the book we put together. The calendars are the calendars they order for us. You can see we featured pumpkin squash, we featured some watermelon, and of course beef, corn, and wheat. We had over 310 samples, the recipes, and received the one-on-one nutrition education from the county extension agents, and then they receive educational handouts. I also want to highlight the other agents, because the fair involves all of us as a team. So our ag program was very involved, and it included Megan overseeing the ceramics contest. She was superintendent for the ceramics contest this year, which was new. And she also provided youth tours. There were over 16,000 youth from various schools coming and learning about agriculture. And also she had a fruit vegetable demonstration garden out there. So she was very excited about that this year, and was able to educate a lot of families. Also, a big part of the fairs, our 4H program, and so our agent Rachel was involved with overseeing the open beef show. And so she had 32 4Hers, they participated in beef, rabbit, swine, goat, horse, and creative arts. And then this year, all of the agents were involved in implementing a new contest for our youth called Table Time at this fair, and that was in the Emerald National Bank Building on Monday. And that promoted family meal time, bringing families back to the table, which we're excited about that. We think that's very important, and they focused on providing a dish based on local panhandle commodities. And so they were judged, and they presented their dish, and we had several in Potter Place, so we're excited. And so, like I said, we had a lot of fun at the fair. It's over, it was a long week. And we're excited, also coming up, I just wanted to inform you that this fall, we will be getting ready for our Farm and Ranch Show, which is here every year. And so Agrileight is a big part of that. I'll be doing live demonstrations on local produce and commodities, and then our ag agent will also be providing some educational seminars to our farmers and ranchers and their families. And that'll happen after Thanksgiving. Do you have any questions?
I just noticed that you mentioned the fair was over twice.
I did, did I? It's a lot of fun. So thank you so much again for supporting our programs, we couldn't do this without your support.
Yeah, and I, as we know, when we get updates from Elizabeth, we always talk about her energy and her, I mean, so, so thank you for what you do in our county and for your consistency and your leadership in that department, so that definitely does not hold so much.
I love what I do, and I'm, yeah, it's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven, IT, I think, to hear a report on status of projects.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so we're here for an update, and we'll do this in addition to the regular support and here of the network gives the projects that we have going on. So, last time I mentioned we had received an appointment in the new firewall. There's some software that goes along with that. We're still in the process of deploying that to every machine in the county. We're doing that in person, so we're going and checking on every machine. It also helps verify inventory and some other important things like that. So that's still ongoing. Same thing is still the offsite backup high-viability server. Still working on getting that online, it suffered another hardware failure this past week. So we are waiting on replacement unit to come. The way that works is there's nine nodes in it, well, well, sorry. One of those 12 nodes is not working. So we need them all to work, they all work together, so we're working on getting a replacement unit from Dell. That's still under working, so it doesn't cost any money, it's just, we keep fighting, they're trying to get it back up and running. And once it is, all these things are taken care of, and it'll be fine, but that's where we are now, so.
Tyler, quick question on that. That is specifically for the backup at the LEC, not the offsite backup that you guys are running and have been running, is that right?
That's correct, okay, so that still continues to run, moving, getting this device up and running. So, hopefully this will be the last hardware failure, get that data, same thing, get that thing going.
Is it just a bad machine, or something else happened?
Uh, it's just been a while, but it's been sitting there, so kind of getting going, shaking the dust off it. There's some components that failed, nothing that hasn't been. Next item is the in-person cybersecurity training we talked about. David is underway on that, he's completed two sessions each with the TAC's office and county clerk's office. Last week, we're scheduling emails out to other departments, so that'll be ongoing for, I'm sure, the next few, uh, meetings. But making progress there, and so far, everybody's doing great, nobody's punched you or anything.
And Judge, your question-
Yeah, we enjoyed that, we were at our eyes open to all the things that could happen, and luckily none of us had clicked on anything that crossed, and I was just waiting for the trip. Just waiting to extend us something. Hopefully you had, you have that. But it was a good, it was a good hour spent that we needed to do. And I think everyone needs to go through that and just realize that there are some people that are feeling this. So it was really good, it was a good education.
And I'm modifying that presentation ahead of schedule, as I deal with the county users, so. Hopefully, next week, maybe we can get some of those folks to be able to achieve that, so Thursday.
Okay.
It's all good.
Thank you, everyone, David?
Yeah.
We'll have them for a while.
Yeah.
Uh, next item is we're still working on incorporating all of the Potter County outfits. So we should record that to IT staff for issues, now we're rolling that out to all outfits in the county.
You mentioned that would take a couple weeks, do we have an ending of when we expect that to be done?
It's likely going to take a couple of weeks.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah, I would say October, sometime in October, it depends on the projects, for sure.
Okay.
Some of it also depends on the machines when they're online, it takes a lot for that encryption process to complete. So it also depends a little bit on usage and online timing, things like that. Well, we'll get a little better update on progress of that next week, so we can kind of give a horizon. Next thing, David's working on a system so ID can verify the identity of end users. So this will be important, so say, for instance, Judge, for me to email password, you call IT to get your email password. How do we know that it's you that we're going to reset the password? So we need to have some verification and some steps in place to help with that kind of thing. It's just another part of the all-around security plan, so. Won't be any, they get any changes, I'll tell anybody, we're just looking at the best option, the work best for all the different departments, so. Now, that's something important to work on. Uh, finally, last item is we're working on implementing metrics to better track the percentage of IT department utilization throughout the county. So which department is using IT the least, the most, sort of where are we spending our time? This is our first full month, so we don't have a full data set yet. So it'll take some time to get that data aggregated to where we can make meaningful information out of it. You know, typically a quarter is generally what you want to see. We're going to start putting that together after this first full month, and then we start to give an idea, and that picture will get completely re-confirmed as we get more and more. So it's important to measure and track all that kind of stuff, so we'll be providing updates on that in the future.
And if I could add to that just a little, so I did have the first monthly meeting with Andrews and Associates that we talked about as a court that we would do outside of that. So there's definitely room for another member of the court. If you'd like to participate, please let us know, we have a standing meeting on the calendar. But the metrics in particular, he showed what he could show us, graphs, those type of things. We've never had that type of visibility. So I think it would be really an interesting thing for us to see, especially as we look at capital expenses for IT. So I was excited, at least the draft that I saw, what could be to come.
Yeah, so we'll be working on that, have some good data for all of it. So that's it for us.
Couple of questions, the IT labor unit, is that still holding strong, it was 68 degrees last time?
It's running great. It is doing so well that I came in, I think it was Friday morning, and the real one went off in the server room, and it turned out to be the old unit giving a low temperature alert.
Like too cold?
Too cold, it didn't know what to do, so it's working fantastic.
Okay. And then, let's see, there was a mention of the staff member at LEC last time. How is that going?
It's going great, Sheriff might shake us down on that, yeah, so he's, he's very busy out there, there's a lot going on.
And who is that that's at?
Rick.
Rick, okay, okay.
So we're also going to be, you know, we're sending other folks out there to work with Rick as well, just so other people are familiar with what's going on. He's not the only one with the knowledge of everything out there, but that'll be his primary location, so.
Okay, and then, what's-
I had a, sorry, I had a mind update that the bird band from last time, we didn't confirm yesterday, no, that's all taken care of. So, good process for that, going forward.
And the new tickets, uh, system, still working well?
So that's what will give us the good data to work with, so that is implemented, and everything's going well so far, no complaints.
And then the final thing I had was wired, the site survey on the wireless issues at the county courthouse. I always think of Julie's department when, as soon as I say that, is there an update on that?
So we're still looking at options on the best way to do that. There's a lot of thought to go into. Obviously, you want to make as least historical impact as possible, so how's the best way to do that with what is here? So we have had our catering guys out again to take a look at some other areas, so we're still working through that. Don't, don't have a solid plan yet, but we will have some, at least a couple of options for different, different possibilities.
Okay, and we did have someone come out and look at it, if I remember right, we were electric, or I remember there were kind of few that came to the table, so I don't know if any of that content you've seen, or would be helpful, but-
We have not seen that, though, we'll follow up.
Okay, yeah, so that may be helpful when we do that.
I think for us, it makes the most sense to look at the biggest trouble areas, maybe, and start with those instead of submitting a plan to rewire the whole building. Maybe we can look at, okay, here's what works, is what we can do with this area, here we can do this other thing, but I don't think there's going to be a cost-effective solution to work with.
Yeah, I agree.
That's kind of going to be our first.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you.
Number eight, online investigation software to consider and act upon, rights on all of the departments assigned. Rehearsal, the home, the review, the clear software, and transfer forms, and collection, counter, county attorney, county attorney, and sheriff. Um, there's no backup in the, in the, um, incident on that, does anyone want to speak to that? Should I, talk about, does your, your people use it a lot?
The other one we were using was going up, and that's the original one.
There's just-
This one's a little cheaper, but it's a lot more accurate, too. It's more up to date on what we're looking for.
So it's a win-win, okay. Does anybody else want to elaborate on that, anybody? I don't have any backups, so I don't know what we're looking at.
It's really a nuts, it's a really nuts project.
Would, would somebody have to like to-
I had my notes from Carrie when we were doing budget prep, so I don't know if this helps, because I know Carrie really led this one, she was looking at Vine versus Clear Technology, and then I just put in my notes, identification of defenders.
No, Vine is not, is not a technology, Vine is the actual thing that we check.
Okay.
So that's the victim's information.
Yeah, so maybe you had to walk through how you use this.
Maybe some of them. Some of these other people can throw good words to which means as well, but it's basically what we use to look down, look for defendants. And it gives us current information on where they might be, and where they could have been told from, and like.
And what was the other company name?
Accurate.
Accurate, okay, okay.
And that's what we currently have.
That's what we have now, that was, they, they almost doubled in price, I think, and they were two or three months behind on some of their stuff. This, this was being more accurate information. Clear, a little clearer.
My understanding was that Accurate, like Sheriff said, was two, three months behind at times where Clear is basically the real-time information. We use it to track down not only defendants, but also witnesses. So it's being served, as well as hot chat. So it's being served, uh, as well as hot chat. Florida uses it similarly for tracking down collections. So real-time information is obviously more valuable.
I think the cost was about the same, because if I had gone up, it was, you know, three months behind.
And there are different levels that, like, different offices will enter. I won't, obviously won't be using law enforcement, but we use it to be able to refund people their money when we can't find them.
So everyone's in, everyone wants to do this?
Carrie called everybody and asked.
And it's all going to be, uh, each department does their own, their own upgrade and expense.
No, it'll be, uh, it'll be taken out of our budget. And Carrie's going to handle the overall.
Okay.
Most of the budget for that, money budget.
Yes. Right, yes.
She's taking all that out of her budget to put it in a pool.
Okay.
If any questions?
I make a motion that we authorize the department's collections, county clerk, county attorney, district attorney, constable, and sheriff to sign agreements for the clear software and transfer funds as appropriate.
So.
I have a motion in second on favor, Virginia. Number nine, Emerald Harbor Bingo District, to consider and act upon the reappointment of Terry Wright and Cliff Bickerstaff to serve on the Emerald Harbor Bingo District. They both have agreed to serve number two for term.
So.
Another motion in second on favor, Virginia. Routine continuing education recognition, personal media, county commission, inclusion education. Everyone who wants to go through our hours per section, eighty-one, twenty-two, five, four, going across, go through section eighty-one, twenty-two, five, six, ten, eleven, eleven, twelve.
I didn't see the backup thing here, but I know that you guys have it if anyone.
Oh, certification, okay. Okay, number seven, bingo proceeds to consider taking action as part of our occupations code, section two thousand one point five zero two. Always receive proceeds from bingo process, things collected by the Texas Lottery Commission. I had an interesting conversation before we started talking about this with Casey, somebody from Good Piva. And he convinced me in our meeting that bingo proceeds and the lottery proceeds need to go straight to the, um, to the, uh, people that he wants them to go to. He says, oh, they're seventy-five thousand dollars. It's all we play. So I thought, well, you know, we give it to Steve, he's seventy-five thousand, we can give it to these people too. So it involved Piva, the old Corral Club, Hilltop, Two Year City, Alamo, and, um, Texaco and Booster. All of them are Park County charities. So I told the guy, it sounds good, we'll have to vote on them. And I'm talking to Ted about it. And so we put it on the agenda. I've talked to Carrie, and Carrie says, well, it's really a lot more than seventy-five thousand. And what, she says, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that's why we're back on the agenda to talk about this and to decide what we want to do with it.
And we can just receive it and they can get our general fund, is that right? Why would we not do that based on our budget?
I know, and that's what I'm saying. Okay, that's what I'm saying now, because at the, at the time of law, it was seventy-five thousand. So I was all in favor of giving to these charities, because that's what we do, you know? And so, um, anyway, that was a choice.
Well, it's going to happen on that road when we start receiving this money and then the state wants something from us. The state wants.
It's usually not free money. There's, there's always a catch.
Aw, you're so jaded.
We are reading this one. This will help, maybe it'll help with some of those unfunded mandates.
Yeah, maybe so. So y'all, I'm free to let y'all make a motion, I'm all right with it, so I'll set the timer.
Which recommendation you answer again?
I'm going to, I'm going to say the recommendation is to keep the money here.
In the general, in the general fund?
General fund?
Do what?
In the general fund?
Yes.
Actual motion?
That would could be.
Second.
That's pretty, that's pretty, I don't know. Motion in second, all in favor, Virginia. That's pretty easy, okay. Number twelve, Commissioner's Court, scheduled for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Set the course, regular public meeting schedule for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty percent of all the government code, section eighty-one point zero five, as the second and fourth Monday of each Monday, and not any of the Commissioner's Court.
Each month, so. Um, Judge, I guess my only question is, I don't ever remember doing an order like this. Is there a change that we have to use this or?
Been a couple years.
We have.
Yeah, we have. It just, it just doesn't happen every year, so.
I make a motion to approve the regularly public meeting schedule for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty as presented.
I have the motion in second, all in favor, Virginia. Uh, number thirteen, I am going to pass this for two weeks.
And could we get backup of what the, if that, if that comes back?
Yes. Number fourteen, recommendation for award RFP one one eight six dash twenty-nine, fire station number one. Consider and act upon awarding RFP one one eight six dash one nine, fire station number one, to the highest branch of the police service. Morning, El Cat. Morning. El Palm. Morning.
How is everyone today?
Good, how are you? El Orange.
We received bids on the tenth. Uh, they were open, all of the contractors, we had five contractor bids, bid bids. All of their bids were proper, complete, committed that on the thirteenth. And went through the bids, uh, all of the different categories that they had. We looked at their, uh, what price the bid was, number of days to complete the project, their subcontractors, their history with Park County, their history of litigation, and the resumes on their, their personnel. And after going through that, the committee came to, we selected commercial industrial builders as the number one, uh, contractor. Out of that process, their bid was for two million, three hundred and seventy-three dollars, seventy, two million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand and ten dollars. And the complete project cost with that attorneys, our, our tech fees, hopefully no attorney fees. The owner's expenses and the owner's contingency is going to be three million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Three what? I'm sorry, three five, is that what you said?
Three, three one eight one, five eight eight.
And that's total with contingency?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. So can you walk through, um, would you remind me who sits on the scoring committee? Is that the same group? Chris?
Judge Tanner.
Okay.
And this, and Richard.
Okay. And then what was their turnaround time on the days to complete the project? Do we have that?
Two hundred and thirty-eight days.
Two hundred and thirty-eight, okay. And then the subs, um, are that scoring criteria? Are you scoring them for using local subs or, oh, we understand that sub contractor category?
We scored them with, uh, uh, history that we, what the members of the committee knew about the subs. I believe all the subs were local.
Yes, they were. They're all local. And it's really just evaluating what they've done in the last few years. So it's basically all the committee members evaluated their thoughts over the last few years on this individual subs.
So are you, I'm just trying to understand the process. Are you evaluating the quality of the subs or the fact that they're local? What's the score? Because the only reason I'm asking that is, um, we should not be in discussions with sub issues. And we are often in discussions with sub issues, so I'm just trying to understand that right.
Comparational.
Oh, yeah, it's a comparison.
I would say a lot of what we looked into on this was not only local, because one, as much as you can, you can local people. And the other side of that was past history of known issues and how would, how would, or they result. So that's a lot of what goes into that. It's currently in this conversation. So it's, um, a lot of it is based off knowledge and some of it is actually based on document.
And have we done work with this venture before in the last week?
Yes.
What, what else did we use?
They built station, fire station three.
Okay.
And they built, also, they also built central, uh, fire station in two thousand.
I moved that we approved the commercial industrial builders. The field fire station, sorry, four A. Bid two million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand and ten dollars.
Okay, I have a motion in second, all in favor, Virginia. I'm seeing. Thank you. While you're standing, I'm just real fast, this is not on the agenda, but I got, I got this from, uh, from Richard at the day. Governor Abbott has appointed several people on the commission of fire protection. And, um, Mr. Paul, um, Mr. Stone, and our community. Mr. Paul, Eric was nominated to be on that committee, so congratulations. Number fifteen, chiller maintenance. To consider and act upon equipment in agreement for chiller maintenance with the West Texas West Tech Chill Water Specialist. Alex City, San Bay Building, amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. LEC Building, amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. Old courthouse, amount of six million, five hundred and forty-four dollars. And the district courthouse, amount of seven thousand, four hundred and six dollars. Contract pricing for tips, interlocal contract number one eight zero one oh one oh one, contract is in effect. Two, one, twenty nineteen, three, nine, fourteen, twenty twenty. Do not merely read that.
This is an extension of current services that we have. The only thing that I have was the Cooley Tower, the installed stand by. They offer an additional maintenance for that. I'd like to do that for one year and either kind of do it ourselves or just see if it's viable. I believe there's an additional break out of the, uh, cost of the break out. There's a lot of money that I found there, so I'll be able to have maintenance, you know? And, uh, I added the maintenance in for the sheriff's Cooley Tower. And that's, that's a, a brand new version of what we just took off of the stand by. So if you put long, have to replace those, so. But other than that, I think if I've gone up, maybe one percent.
And all these funds are budgeted and this is, okay. I make a motion that we approve the agreement for chiller maintenance with West Texas Chill Water Specialists as presented to the court.
So.
I have a motion in second, all in favor, Virginia. Five, zero. Number sixteen, RFP one one nine zero dash one nine, body transport information to allow the purchasing agent to open the single bid and to consider and act upon the volume, RFP one one nine one zero one one.
Only had one bid, so I'm going to see you guys just screw each other up.
Yes. You guys.
You guys. Open it, be back.
Okay.
Judge, will we wait because we sing happy birthday to you for last?
Yeah, you cannot.
Julie gets started.
Twenty-nine, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Day was clear, what did you say?
Thirty-five times two minus one.
There you go.
The minutes reflect.
Thank you for your attention. Thank you for reminding me, Sheriff. Thank you for in charge of our reunion coming up. We got, um, a little tearful. And Karen did. It's going to be fun. It was a good one. We have a, we have a band playing, definitely. A grateful day, I get a grateful.
We got to get him back to Rita and Kenny. We got to get this good day.
Oh, you're killing me. Your probably is going down to recover.
Yes, sure.
We'll just pull it out. Okay, Mr. Wong.
All right. We received one from Shaker Mortuary. Uh, everything is in order. Pricing looks to be about the same as what we were paying initially with our, our last, last one. So cremations, uh, per body is five hundred dollars. One twenty-five is for bodily, bodily usable, dollar sixty-five per mile. Standby time is seven dollars and fifty cents per hour, uh, per diem. It's right in there, thirteen fifty for, for males, one and two. Hotel room is one fifteen, or one fifteen, sorry. Uh, refrigeration storage is fifty-five dollars, so that went down a little bit. Uh, body bag, thirty dollars, which is the same, fifty-five for over, oversized. Biohazard is an additional, uh, charge, fifty. So everything's right in order.
Chris, just in terms of the process, um, I know we had a couple agenda items. And the last one I'm thinking through is when that bid was closed. We, I'm assuming reopen, this is the one bid, we received that, all, all of that process.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I make a motion that we, um, award RFP.
Questor bid.
Eleven ninety dash nineteen to Shaker as the single bid.
Sir.
I have a motion in second, all in favor, Virginia. Five, zero. Okay, number seventeen, tax rate for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, to adopt the tax rate for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty, uh, point seven zero one zero zero or one hundred dollar valuation for the, one hundred dollar valuation for the fiscal year beginning ten one, twenty nine, ten, consisting of zero point six five zero nine nine for maintenance operations and zero point zero five zero zero one for interest and saving. In the head of our public hearing, if you have a question for this.
We approve the, uh, unit rate of zero point six five zero nine nine and the INS rate of zero point zero five zero zero one. Total tax rate is zero point seven zero one, zero zero.
Second motion, I have a second, all in favor, Virginia.
Number eighteen, employment items to consider and act upon, following the broken bridge, resignation with Lucy Pringle and someone lower if they can watch over eight, twenty nineteen. I have a motion for that.
Make a motion to approve the employment items as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor. Uh, Park County project, do you have anything to report?
I don't list any more questions.
Just, um, before and after from the movie property, the demolition. Don't think I saw any of that yet.
No.
Yeah.
Want some pictures?
Yeah, I mean, it would just, we took time to tour. It would be nice to see that and see the expenditure, the before and after.
Okay.
Jail report is five hundred and forty-four people in jail, nine more of those in now, and we still have eight hundred and five. Eighty-four percent, thousands, seventy percent.
Um, Judge, a quick thing on this item. I had the opportunity a week or so ago to, to join the sheriff and his team through a mentorship, a graduation with some of his staff on the front line. So just a, a quick kudos to say thank you. I mean, the stories in there are amazing. And what I shared in that room to the inmates is, you know, we often just see them as line items, see them as dollar amounts and budgets. And, and not that we're inhuman to what's happening on the other end, but we see the dollars. So, um, his staff in particular, um, the work that they do at that ground level. And to hear people speak of, and they don't want to disappoint, you know, his teams, oh, it's just such a beautiful thing to hear. And so I just, I wanted to take time to thank him and his staff because those efforts and the fact that they're happening at this very local level are, are amazing.
And they do not go unnoticed, Sheriff. Number twenty-one, engine time, do we have anything?
Nothing new, just an update on the fire engine. It was a total loss, working with a pack right now to get a check cut and also to get a price. Buying, dealing with that, using that as a course.
Because though that equipment is not something you could just go buy like a Tahoe, what is a timeline to actually replace it as a total loss? I mean, I just think about how early we see the purchases till the equipment actually gets here.
Well, we've been kind of working on this every day. As soon as the incident happens, our dealer calls for us to power plant. They are trying to fully track offline. And then all we have to do is change order, change specifications on it, and then they'll build it for us. And that'll give us about four or five month timeframe, if not it's four hundred days.
Okay.
So we're diligently working, trying to see if we can make offers early.
Yeah, because I'm assuming we need that in the fleet to bring in cameras.
I'm going to send you the special engine items for next time. I have one thing I need to clarify. We have the nomination for, we need one person to call the county. Ask my person twice, which I have not responded, so. Got anybody who wants to discuss, let me know.
And then what about, here's one, that's the other one. Okay.
In charge, it's, Mr. Goose wants a lot of this, bring it up.
And then another agenda item, Judge, and I'm sure Carrie will send this, because we depend on this one. We did get financial updates on the David and Glenn agreement. And Commissioner Vaughn and I have joined, still continue to join the meetings of the city, so we'll have updates on that. So I think the financials are enough to accommodate the plans.
And just for the record, so you'll know, Carrie's motion is not doing well at all, so just say a little care. Carrie. Okay. Anything else? Nothing else, we are returning.